Welcome to Meeting Center. Please enter your access. You are about to join the conference.
Oh, this is color inside. All right, so we're gonna make a dump. Yeah. You tell the mayor that they've already signed the oath and they're just gonna kind of take it. He knows about it. Well, that we're gonna kind of look like.
Let the record reflect, we reconvene with all members present. Please note that Councilmember Rachel Erlich and Councilmember Thomas Helen Putus are absent excused, and Councilmember Eric Range is joining us virtually tonight. Please, for those who are able, please rise and join us in Pledge Allegiance. I ask you to remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its republic, which is standing here, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a moment to remember a couple longtime residents we've lost over the past few weeks. Lois Vono, longtime Madison resident, died at home on July 15th. She was 82. I was not able to get much information on Lois, but I do know she was a longtime resident on Pine Tree Terrace, and she would often reach out to me and other borough officials with suggestions on how we could do better. And then Phyllis Chappa, a former lifelong Madison resident, died June 30th after long illness at age 66, survived by her two brothers Samuel and Philip, and their respective spouses, and her six nieces and nephews. Born in Morristown in '57, raised in Madison with her brothers, graduated Villa Walsh Academy in Morristown, where she discovered her talent as an opera singer. As a young woman, she performed on many occasions with the Villa Walsh throughout New Jersey. She earned her bachelor's degree from St. Elizabeth University in Convent Station, and she had a career spanning over 30 years, office manager at Tropar Manufacturing Farm Park. Carolyn Curry, longtime Madison resident, passed away on July 4th. Born in East Orange but raised in Madison, graduated Madison High School, class of '61, and then the Katherine Gibbs Secretarial School, and she married George Curry in 1962. She had a rewarding career, spanned many decades, including work at JCPL, Drew University, Newark Beth Israel, and her husband's business GEC Service Centers, and finally ended up with her dream job at St. Hubert's Animal Shelter. She was a member of the United Methodist Church, and Carolyn, sadly, as I'll share shortly, that her husband George died nine days later. He and Carolyn were married for 60 years. George was born in Mountainside, New Jersey, in 1942. There we go. We have special arms on our artwork. They settled in Madison and made many great memories here. George is a 1960 graduate at Madison High School. He established himself under the tutelage of Coach Ted Monica as a talented athlete, especially on the football field. He was only a freshman when he was recruited to the varsity team and went on to receive the offer of full scholarship from University of Miami. In 1962, he and Carolyn got married, Carolyn Heck at the time. And I personally got to know George as he was one of the regulars at Central Lunch, AKA Joe's. And Carolyn and George are survived by their two children, Sharon and Brian, along with their respective spouses, two grandchildren. And it should be noted that Carolyn is the sister of Lori Hagerich, who is the secretary of HPC. So let's take a moment to remember George and Carolyn Curry, Lois Vono, and Phyllis Chappa, and let us pass our thoughts on to the families and friends they have left behind. Thank you. All right. Can I have a motion for the executive minutes of June 12, 2023?
So moved.
Second. Already discussed, all in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of June 12, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Obviously, we have a very special night here, so let me step down below. Kyle Wickman, please step forward. Family for Kyle, please come and join us. Wants to hold the Bible. Raise your right hand, left hand on the Bible. Yep. Yep. Your father's tall, so there we go.
Not that tall.
Yeah. All right, repeat ours to me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Kyle Wickman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
Acting Fire Chief.
Acting Fire Chief.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Establishing the United States.
Establishing the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good luck. Congratulations.
Dominic DeRosa, please come forward. And family? Raise your right hand, place left hand on the Bible. I state your name.
Aye, Dominic DeRosa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
Probationary firefighter.
Probationary firefighter.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Establishing the United States.
Establishing the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And for those, for those at home whose know that Don was, for his retired chief, Lou DeRosa, putting his badge on.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Must be a little rusty because of my rush to get to the oaths there. I missed all my other greetings, so I'll quickly get through this. But, you know, this is certainly a very special night. Kyle, congratulations. Look forward to your leadership. I first met Dominic when I was Coach Bob, so it was an honor to be giving his oath as Mayor Bob. So Dominic, congratulations for joining us. A few things that happened over the last two weeks. Obviously, we did get together a couple weeks ago for Chief Lou's retirement. Find all my notes here. And he is, you can see now he's in uniform, he's enjoying retirement quite well. So great to see you here. I was unable to attend the celebration as I was on a family vacation, but was able to send a message as I stood in front of Nantucket's Mets Rosenbauer ladder truck, the same model we have here in Madison. And so again, Chief Lou, thank you for your 41 years of dedicated service to Madison, including the last 13 as our chief, and your extra job as our communications guru, handling upgrades for our phone and radio system and anything that we needed, you stepped forward to take care of. So thank you so much. And other things going on, we held a stakeholders meeting for the Waverly Place Reconstruction Project last Monday. The meeting was well attended, provided great feedback for the concept that was presented, and the design team will meet in the coming days to discuss the feedback, and we will announce the next steps after that meeting. And speaking of construction, I want to thank all our residents for the patience during the annual mill and overlay and road reconstruction season. There has been the usual paving disruptions, so thank you for putting up with the inconvenience as we reinvest in our roadways, and you know there will be much better surface when it's all done. And then last Thursday, I was joined with by Council President Hoover and Councilman Bob Landergan at Formaggio's Pizzeria, the former Rocco's Trotteria location, and to cut their ribbon, so stop on by and say hello to them. And then after that, headed over to Damiano's Service Station on Park Avenue, and there we had our, what I have now decided to call a ribbon tying ceremony, figuring if you cut the ribbon when you open a business, you should tie the ribbon when you close the business to wrap up a great career. And that's exactly what we did. Fred Damiano and Frank Zarro opened the service station in 1976. Their last day is this Friday after 47 years of providing service. Frank survived a major fire. He still has pictures hanging in his office there. He thought his business was only going to last three years when that happened, 1979. And the business also survived the retaining wall giving out, so perseverance paid off. They have been great supporters of the community, and not to mention excellent mechanics. And as has been shown in their social media chatter, there are quite a few customers that will greatly miss Fred and Frank, and not too sure what they're gonna do next. And then on Friday, we gathered on the steps of Hartley Dodge and welcomed Colombian Council General Maria Del Pilar Cruz Sliva, and many Madison residents to celebrate Columbia's Independence Day, which was the day before on July 20th. I want to thank Guillermo Gil for organizing the event. And then for our employees of the month for July, Patrolman Renato Capillis Jr. and Jonathan Fanaccio from the Police Department, Frenicario, sorry, I changed the pronunciation, Jonathan Frenicario from the Police Department. Both officers were recently involved in an investigation that led them to a woman who was trying to harm herself. They brought her to safety and provided medical assistance until the ambulance arrived. So congratulations on going over and above. And our anniversary for this month is Lieutenant Craig Pirelli, Police Department, on celebrating his 20th anniversary on July 29th. And so those are our announcements right now. We are gonna shift to reports from committees, so if you want to, we'll, yep. Thank you, Kyle. Thank you for all the fire officers here. Just about at the five-minute mark, so we'll get restarted shortly. All right, we reconvene with all announced members still present. One, I'm a little rusty after a break in between meetings, so I did forget one other announcement. We were notified just a couple hours ago from NJ Edge, who provides our internet service, that there will be some service disruption starting at 10:00 PM. We anticipate that will probably be done by then, but there could be disruptions, and so if you're watching the live feed at home, that could be disruptive, disrupted. We will, I guess we still have the ability to continue to record, so we'll have a full meeting. But again, I anticipate that will probably be done by then. So let's get to reports from committees, community affairs, and help if you have it. Council President Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. From Downtown Development Commission and the Director of Business Development, please visit the vendors at the Madison Farmers Market at Dodge Field from 1:00 to 6:00 PM. I was there this past weekend, they had a full slate of vendors there, so you should not be surprised, shouldn't be any surprises. The season comes, the season continues through November 16th and features live music weekly from 3:00 o'clock on. The downtown concert series held at the Madison Museum of Early Tourism Crafts will continue with Rosewood on Friday, August 18th. The concerts are from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Please bring your chair and plan to have dinner or dessert downtown. Bottle Hill Day will be held on October 7th this fall. Sponsorship and vendor information has been published and is available on RoseNet. From the Chamber of Commerce, August Sidewalk Sales Days will be from August 24th through September 2nd. The Madison Car Show is scheduled for Saturday, October 7th. There is no rain date. If anyone is interested in advertising on the notorious place
Wait for the state to pass their budget before they could give us the tax rate. This caused the delay in sending out the bills. Please contact the tax collector if you have any questions. From the Finance Department. Inside the tax bill, residents will find our annual one-sheet budget summary. This document gives an excellent snapshot of property taxes, the municipal budget, and services provided. The flyer includes information on how we are working to save the Drew Forest. It also includes a short summary of the $2.4 million in grants that were recently awarded to the borough. Residents that do not receive a property tax bill can visit rosenet.org if they would like to see the budget summary. Copies are also available in the Hartley Dodge Memorial. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Move on to Communications and Petitions.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and Council received an email dated July the 21st from Resident David Steckety of Fairview Road recognizing the hard work of the Sewer Department staff at Public Works.
Thank you. And now we move on to our first of two invitations for public comment. This one is limited to our agenda discussion items or our resolutions and consent agenda. If you wish to comment on any other topic, you must wait until our second comment period coming up after the ordinances for hearing. The one agenda item you're allowed to comment on is Sustainable Madison Community Equity and Diversity Profile Presentation. And these are the resolutions you may comment on, and these are also part of the consent agenda, so when we get to that, you'll know what's included. Resolution 200 is authorizing extending the term of current Madison Police Department Sergeant's promotional list. Detective Ryan Dunn and Corporal Travis Daniel are the two names on the list, and this is if should a vacancy come up for a sergeant, they would be hired from that list. Resolution 201 awarding contract to Historic Building Architects Incorporated for professional architectural services for Hartley Dodge Memorial Project, the East Wing, and this is funded through Ordinance 38-2033 and Ordinance 39-2033. Resolution 202 awarding contract to Ben Schaefer Recreation, amount of $657,646.66 for the 2023 Accessible Playground Project at Dodge Field. This is funded through ordinances 18-2023 and 29-2022. Resolution 203 is authorizing shared service agreement with the Board of Education to provide special law enforcement officers for the schools, and this is the borough pays for one, and the Board of Education covers the cost of the two, and this will additional one, which will be working with the elementary schools. Resolution 204 is authorizing shared service agreement with the Somerset County Marketplace. Resolution 205 is amendment to the contract with Rosenbauer Minnesota LLC to repair the Madison Fire Department fire apparatus. This is additional $20,000. We're totaled $75,000, and this is funded through ordinance 25-2022. Resolution 206 is authorizing use of competitive contracting process for professional park planning services. Resolution 207 is renewing liquor license for 2023. This is for cigar beverage. This is an inactive license. Resolution 208 is proclaiming October 7th, 2023 as Bottle Hill Day and authorizing the annual beer garden. Resolution 209 is authorizing Madison Chamber of Commerce sidewalk sales on August 24th through September 2nd. Resolution 210 is approving license, raffle license for Thursday Morning Club for November 2nd. Resolution 211 is approving special event permit for use of Memorial Park parking area by the Adult School of the Chatham's Madison Floren Park on various dates in October, November, and December. Resolution 212 is approving a special event permit for Cars and Coffee Showcase to be held at King's Road on Thursday, September 21st. Resolution 213 is approving use of the community pool parking lot by the Cub Scout Pack 226 on September 15, 2023. Resolution 214 is rejecting the submissions for Madison Utility Building Roof Repairs and to rebid and authorize negotiation. The lowest responsible and responsive bid was substantially exceeding the cost estimate, so all were rejected. Resolution 215 is imposing final contract offer to Teamsters Local 469. Pages to this, I should clip together. Resolution 216 is approving raffle license for St. Vincent Market Church on October 7th. Resolution 217 is award competitive contract between Madison-Chatham Joint Meeting and Green Skies Clean Energy for solar energy power purchase agreement. This will be a solar array at the joint sewer treatment plant on North Passaic Avenue. Resolution 218 is authorizing appointment of Mauricio Gomez for position of truck driver Department of Public Works, and the annual salary is set in accordance with the appropriate collective bargaining unit contract. Resolution 219 is approving raffle license submitted by Madison, the Elks Lodge, to conduct daily incident raffle games, including Sundays. And Resolution 220 is supporting the application of a youth leadership grant through MASA. Grant is in the amount of $3,900. You may comment on any of those resolutions, or quite a few, because we had a gap in between meetings and/or the agenda item. Anyone wishing to comment on those items, please step forward, state your name and address and the resolution or the agenda item you were commenting on.
David May, Lover Rose Valley, Retired Superintendent of Public Works. I am opposed to the Resolution 218 of a Republican Morris, who told me I was a truck driver, where my son came with his job position. He's got the certification and the all the experience, the 21 years' experience in the public works field. I also spoke to Mr. Cody three times. He said, "Your son is overqualified for this position." That's why I don't know why he got this, but when I talked to Ken O'Brien about it, he told me, "I'm not hiring him because of me. We're afraid that you're going to interfere with his day-to-day operations." That's what it is. Ray and I talked three times on this topic, and Ray even said, "I'm not going to put anybody in there until your son gets a job." Every other department head here has their sons working, working for the town after they retire. I have 42 years and 10 months to help build this town to what it is today. All I ask is, why can't my son get a job? That's what I want to know. And he's willing to take the $28,000, $28,000 cut in pay to come to MASA. He's got 21 years at Floren Park, and he wants to finish his career at MASA. That's what I want to know. I don't know what good it could do for him for now, but what can be done? Now, I put all my years, I started here when I was 19 years old. I retired in 63. So, and Bob, you know what I went through. Between every snowstorm, sand, any kind of natural disaster you could take up, I devoted my, devoted my life to this town, and my family did too. He's asking for a job. He'd like to get the job, and Ray even told me, he's right here. He told me, right in my face in his office, "My son is overqualified for this position." But Ken doesn't like me, so I don't know. And Ken, Ray even says, "He can't even work with Ken the way he used to work with me." I worked with everybody. Bob, you know it. John, you know it. So, I've known you guys a long time, and that's the only reason why I'm here. I would never be up here if this, if this weren't the right way, I would be here to see my son appointed. Mayor, you know me too. How much I, how much stuff, me and my family, he's born, raised, and pays taxes to this town, and he coaches football, baseball for the kids. One time we had a model here, when it came to a job application, we chose Madison residents first if they were qualified. My son, I know is qualified. He's got, he's got the experience. That's why I'm here, opposing this thing here, this one, this appointment here. If anybody wants to have a meeting with me, I have a lot of free time to talk about this whole thing, and that's the reason why I'm here tonight. So, I don't know what you should do or anything there. With Ray and I and Jim, we've worked a lot, a lot, a long time. Even when we started May Day with Jim, on Saturday mornings, at 6:00 in the morning. Right, Jim?
I don't know if my three minutes are up yet.
You got a one-minute, you got one-minute grace period, but, but, okay.
I hate to see a lot, I'm sorry if I sound a little bit, but my son's just trying to get a job, but I see Jeremy and Tom something happened, there was no problem. Louis, there was a son just got hurt, no problem. My son, he says, "He wants to get a job." He gave, like I said, "Will it take a $28,000 cut in pay?" I said, "You want to go?" He goes, "Dad, I want the job at MASA." He wants to get out of Floren Park. He loves MASA. He lives right here in Love Land. That's why I can't figure it out. I can't figure it out. That might be a small, but I don't know what can be done. I know what can be done if you want to re-interview, because every time we had an interview, Ken was, went to him, said, said to my son, "Well, what do you, how do you think I'm running the job?" I said, "It's not, it's not, you do whatever you want to do." So, there's the only reason why I stepped in. Otherwise, I would never have stepped in at all. You know, we haven't been here for seven years, but this, this one thing here really got me upset.
And that's time, Dave. So, we can't have, we don't have a dialogue. We just take your comments, and then you can sit down, and I'll wrap up. Thanks for coming to visit. And as with any other personal issue, obviously, that cannot be discussed in public here, and our staff, or I know they have followed through with your son directly, and so any other further conversations, certainly, they can, you can reach out. So, but appreciate coming, and certainly appreciate all your dedication to Madison. Anyone else wishing to comment on any of the resolutions or the agenda item? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we now move on to our agenda discussions. Pam and Kathy?
I'm Kathy Capitale, Chair of the Sustainable Madison Board of Equity, and I want to thank Pam, our newest member, newest committee member, who's here today, and want to thank her for spearheading a new action for our community, the Community Equity and Diversity Profile, and incidentally, for putting in the hard work to put together a successful grant application to the Sustainable Jersey, which awarded $20,000 to Madison, a local consultant who assesses municipal properties with green infrastructure solutions and to install land demonstration rooms, infrastructure projects. But that's a topic for another day. I just want to take this moment to recognize Pam for the great asset she has turned out to be on the Sustainable Madison team. Seth, our presentation tonight is on the Community Equity and Diversity Profile Action, which was templateless developed by the team at Sustainable Jersey dot org. It aligns our town's desire to focus on diversity and inclusion, well, well, with our town's desire. For those of you who are unfamiliar with Sustainable Jersey, it's a voluntary certification program for municipalities that inspires them to demonstrate their commitment to sustainability and provides tools and guidance to help them do so. Next slide, sorry.
You got the next, you got the background one?
Okay. Madison has been a participating municipality since the first certification cycle in 2011, and is currently the champion among mid-sized communities, having achieved the most points for improved actions in 2022. Municipalities can choose from among 153 different actions in categories ranging from energy and transportation to health and wellness, natural resources, waste management, arts and creative culture, operations and maintenance, and diversity and equity, among others. The Sustainable Jersey Profile we are here to talk about today will be submitted as part of the Sustainability 2023 Certification Cycle. Thank you, Pam, for those five words. I just want to like passing down the reason for you listening to this presentation. As for this application to Sustainable Jersey, we are required to present to you our findings.
And other plans are actually dependent on this initial baseline plan. Completing this plan also provides special recognition by Sustainable Jersey. It actually puts us into a point where there are grant opportunities that may establish eligibility or preferential treatment by doing this action program, which really caught my eye. And let's see, the goals? Okay, very good. Now, what is the main goal of the action plan? The Equity and Diversity Action Plan brings attention to the fact that everyone should be able to contribute and to share in the benefits of a sustainable community, and everyone should have a say in making the decisions that affect their lives and that shape their community. The process, our team included, our leaders included Lisa Jordan, who unfortunately is not here this evening, she had other obligations, and myself. We started this program, working on this program in January. The first portion of the plan was to gather demographic statistics and mapping of Madison that showed diversity characteristics at the neighborhood level with a focus on vulnerability. Next requirement was to recruit a team who could review this information and provide their personal knowledge and perspectives based on living and/or working in Madison. The recruitment of key community leaders started in April. A meeting took place on June 8th, and seven community groups were identified, or social groups, as Sustainable Jersey identifies it. Each participant shared their observation about challenges Madison residents face and also voiced their recommendations about what should be done going forward. The team included Lisa Jordan, she's a regular member of Sustainable Madison, and she's a professor at Drew University, Grace Kim, who joins us this evening, she's also a Sustainable Madison member who represents the Board of Education, and she's an active volunteer and resident, Reverend Craig Dunn, who is the parish leader for the First Baptist Church, which is on Cook Avenue, and Tanya Van Order is the executive director of the Madison Housing Authority. She also joined us. Stuart Steiden Stricker represented the Wind of the Spirit, which is an immigrant resource center that just moved to Madison. The information gathered from the team was formalized in a report submitted to council as well as the planning board, as required by the terms of the application. Next slide, Statistics of Interest. Mapping tools were provided by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and this allowed us to create a local map of overburdened sections of town. The overburdened community map identified a section of Madison as overburdened in the category of minority, and that was at 47.5%. The hurdle rate was 45%. The team identified seven social groups. This included Hispanics and Latinos, Blacks, LGBTQ, seniors and elderly, low income, an ethnic group, the Italian community, and we also strongly felt that a group titled "General Population" as related to mental health should be included. Recommendations. The project team recommends encompassing all groups by starting a movement in Madison called Making Changes Step by Step. This could possibly be advanced by the newly-formed Diversity Ad Hoc Committee, which was set up by resolution in December of 2022 and established in January. Their mission is to plan educational and social events that will bring the community together and encourage more diverse residents to volunteer for boards and committees within Madison, being inclusive. As pointed out by one team member, what is needed is commitment, dialogue, opening of minds. Opportunities are out there, but communication is required. Another observation was, working with community leaders and staff involves building trust, and which does not happen by email. The category of mental health applies to all social groups and is included as an important concern. While mental health awareness services have offered, been offered over the years in Madison and surrounding communities, the subject of mental health is currently gaining recognition by our own town council, newly-formed nonprofit organizations, and residents. Also noted in our submission to Sustainable Jersey is the fact that the demographic statistical information that was gathered for this project is in question. For example, it was observed that both the Hispanic population and the population, in quotes, "not speaking English well," are known to be understated. It was actually reported as being 13%. It's more like in the 20% range. And this was noted because apparently the census is off because undocumented individuals were reluctant to participate. And in closing, it's important to note that Madison has been proactive, you've done a good job, actually, in recognizing, recognizing and encouraging full community involvement and communication in many ways. Besides the Diversity Ad Hoc Committee, examples include the Minority Student Internship Program, which will offer opportunities to minority high school students to help out with borough business while learning about local government and encouraging involvement. We welcome the Wind of Spirit, a nonprofit immigrant resource center, to town. Another example of progress is the Madison Alliance for Racial Equity that promotes social justice and equity across the board. Lisa Jordan had oversight of webinars and presentations on environmental justice, which was another action program, and is, and it was coordinated with the effort of Madison Alliance for Racial Equity. Both the borough and local organizations are doing a good job of recognizing the needs of social groups. We identified, as, but as one profile team member identified, we can do a better job. And I, I thank you. I also have an announcement. Sustainable Madison, as you know, as Kathy mentioned, we received a, a grant for green infrastructure, and we're partnering with Rutgers to work up maps of impervious surface and also construct a green, a rain garden. We're going to be meeting with Dr. Chris Oropta, who's heading, head of this program, and as somebody said, Saint, with, that will be on this Wednesday at 9:30 at the library. So, it's, it's an opportunity to learn about green infrastructure and rain gardens and what can be done at the library, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam, and thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Grace, for your work with us also, and the full committee. Any comments or questions? I think very good report, and the fact that we have a, the diversity committee that can kind of take this handoff and continue, and, you know, some of the groups you've mentioned are independent from the borough, but part of our community, and that's really what makes it happen, is the community working together. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just had one comment. You know, I've always found that people tend to gather in their neighborhoods, to kind of stay together in the neighborhood, and, you know, just part of a town, but through my neighborhood, or they gather by ethnic group, and they kind of stay as apart. What I like about this is you're reaching out, and you're going to bring all these groups together, and it's when you bring them all together, that's what makes the town stronger and makes it better. So, I think this is a very, very worthwhile effort, and I give you a lot of credit.
Yeah, I would echo Bob's comments, and I would just add, I'm the liaison to the Diversity Ad Hoc Committee, and I'm very excited to see what the committee can do to, to help with this initiative. I personally believe that we have far more in common than we all have differences, and I think anything that we can do to recognize that and make people come together is going to be very worthwhile. So, thank you for your work.
Thank you very much. All right, we now move on to ordinance for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on first reading at the regular meeting of the council, held on June the 26th, 2023. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public, requesting same.
I call up ordinances for second reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title. Ordinance 36-2023.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $95,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a truck and accessories for the fire department.
I open the hearing for ordinance 36. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 36-2023.
I second it. Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 36-2023 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance 37-2023.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $13,600 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of new sets of firefighter turnout gear.
I open the hearing for ordinance 37. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 37-2023.
Second. Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 37-2023 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance 38-2023.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $700,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for renovation of the Hartley Dodge Memorial Building.
I open the hearing for ordinance 38. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 38-2023.
Second. Council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
I declare 38, I declare ordinance 38-2023 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance 39-2023.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $400,000 from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for renovations of the Hartley Dodge Memorial Building.
I open the hearing for ordinance 39-2023. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 39-2023.
Second. Council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 39-2023 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance 40-2023.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $45,000 from the Municipal Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Trust Fund for a parks improvement plan.
Open hearing on ordinance 40. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 40-2023.
Second. Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 40-2023 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper, file the ordinance according to the law. And now we're on to our second of two invitations for public comment. This is when you may comment on any topic. Again, same rules apply. Try to keep your comments three minutes, but we give you a one-minute grace period. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward.
Guess what I'm commenting about? Guess what I'm commenting about? I'm here representing Friends of the Drew Forest, and I'd just like to say that as we await the Morris-
Announce your name even though we know who you are.
What?
Announce your name even though-
Oh, yeah, okay. I signed it, you couldn't read that?
Yeah.
Kathy Caca Valley, 82 Central Avenue, Madison. As we await the Morris County Open Space Trust decision on Madison's application for funding, regional support for the preservation of the Drew Forest continues to grow. Friends of the Drew Forest has been distributing our signature blue lawn signs to residents in several Morris County towns due to an uptick in requests. So far, eighty percent of recent sign requests are from residents outside of Madison. However, if any Madison resident wants a sign or needs a replacement sign or stake due to wear and tear, they can request one on the friendsofthedrewforest.org website. And a word about staying cool. In these unusually hot July days, it's good to remind ourselves of the cooling benefits of forests and other tree canopies. Trees release water vapor through their leaves, which cools the trees and their surroundings. According to Yale Environment 360, the water that a single tree transpires daily has a cooling effect equivalent to two domestic air conditioners for a day. Temperatures in the shade can feel ten to fifteen degrees cooler. I've experienced this myself. When I walk around town in the summer, I try to choose the shadier side of the street. On a really hot day, I head to the woods for some relief rather than cycling or walking in the sun. Between 2001 and 2016, Madison lost 269 acres of trees, which is equivalent to about one and a half times the size of the entire Drew campus. More recently, between 2011 and 2021, the average annual loss has been calculated at eleven acres of trees per year, the equivalent of losing almost half of Summer Hill Park each year. Let's save the Drew Forest, all fifty-three acres of it. It will help put the brakes on tree loss and continue to provide a cool space for people to walk in the heat of the summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. There are some shocking numbers on tree loss which you can't afford. And just aside on the signs, I saw a PowerPoint presentation recently that used some Google Street Views, and in front of a house was a "Save the Drew Forest" sign, so Google has now captured the sign, so well done. Mike?
Michael Martinez, five Independence Court. Speaking of fifteen degrees, I think that's about the difference now versus when the firefighters were in here. Anyway, I got a few things, Mayor. The first is a suggestion, I've heard Councilman Harlan Pootis mention this a few times. The first public comment before you get a chance to actually hear what's coming feels a little out of order. You know, I saw this on the agenda, didn't really know what was coming. I don't know if you can make the presentation available, you know, ahead of time or switch the ordering. You know, I think this is the third meeting, by the way, it was a great presentation, thank you for that. I think it was the third meeting in a row, though, where the only discussion in council has been on environmental or climate issues. And I think if you take it back to the beginning of the year, with the exception of the audit and maybe the playground, it's kind of like the only thing that we talk about. I would just, you know, we'd love for you guys to raise the bar. Other things going on in the town that I would love to hear you drill into, public safety, the water utility, there's a lot going on, so I would just love to hear you guys discuss that. And then the last thing, so on the Waverly Place, I was there on Monday, thank you for that, I learned a lot. And you know, I just asked that you, I would love to drill into the number a little bit, Mayor, I think you guys cited 1.2 in the meeting. Seems like that's going to be a little light. So if we can just drill into that and maybe just continue to be transparent about what we expect around that, and continue to listen to the business owners and the landowners. You know, it's clear to me that, you know, the sidewalks and the infrastructure are past the point of, you know, disrepair, so it seems like something has to get done. But I think they brought, you know, really good suggestions, and I ask that you continue to listen to them. The main thing I wanted to bring up tonight was, you know, the issue of the PBA. So this has been, you know, something that I think has spilled into the public sphere, and I think frankly it's a distraction and an embarrassment for the town. So I respectfully, you know, no disrespect to the administrator, the attorney, the CFO, you guys run this town, the mayor runs this town, the council runs this town. Please, I ask that you, you know, show leadership on this, show maturity on this, reach out your hand, step into a room with them, let's figure this out. This has been going on for too long, and it seems to be a common thread with other public unions in the town. You know, we rely on these people when we are at our most vulnerable, whether it's police, fire, public works. You know, and the data is pretty transparent, we can see exactly what other chiefs of police make. I was going through town by town, Livingston has twelve police officers that earn more than our chief of police. East Hanover has eight, Summit, Forum Park, they each have four. So, you know, I would say let's listen to what the PBA has to say. I'm not saying we should be Oprah and, you know, give cars and benefits to everyone that asks, but part of being a leader, part of being mature is listening. And when the data is there, and it's clear that, you know, at the top levels we're probably under earning, we need to listen and meet them halfway. So I would love to put this to bed and move on. So that's it, thank you very much.
Any others wishing to comment? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, just a, you know, we have often looked at our cycle with comment period, and this has worked fairly well, not to say it's perfect, but yeah, there are some things that are pretty obvious you can comment on, sometimes you can't. And, you know, today had a very interesting title, but it would have been tough to comment on that. Obviously, the second comment period always gives you a chance to then comment. Periodically, we will have a special presentation which will allow comments involved in that. But we continue to look at the way we run the meetings. Waverly Place, as you stated, it was a very productive meeting. I've had some unofficial meetings during my commute from Britton Street to Borough Hall and with the Waverly Place business owners, and so the feedback has been very helpful as they just reinforce some of the things that were said that night. But the universal recognition is the fact that it is, whatever the actual design is, we will see, but it needs attention, and so that certainly it will get it. When we go out and we put together a bid package and all that, the engineer has to put together cost estimates, and so, you know, Bob Vogel can make that available to see how that, what is involved at 1.2. And, you know, along with, I think, many residents, this council is looking forward to wrapping up the negotiations with the PBA. We are going into arbitration, so that's often used when sides don't agree, and so a neutral party will take a look and also looks at comparable salaries and comes up with a final settlement. So we anticipate that process to come to an end very soon. And I said it a few months ago, and it's, in every labor negotiation, it's, you know, it's kind of like making sausage, it's a process no one wants to see. And it, very rarely does it go smoothly, and it's never intended to devalue, no matter what the position is, the employees. As we saw tonight, we have a great fire department, we have a great police department, I am very proud of the community developing. We had this presentation on diversity tonight, and the effort our police department makes for being part of our welcoming diversity is so important. You know, we have the announcement of National Night Out, and you will see the support that the police go out in the neighborhoods and the great interactions of building community. So they are a great part of Madison, and we want to make sure they are taken care of appropriately. So we look forward to wrapping that all up. We now move on to introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. We'll have a hearing date set for August the 14th, 2023. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available members of the public requesting copies.
I call ordinances for first reading, ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance by title, ordinance 41-2023.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating an additional $462,000 from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for the potable water well improvements.
Mayor, I move ordinance 41-2023.
Second.
Comments? This is a project that did go out to bid, the bids were well beyond, and so it was clearly that this scope was beyond the original budget, so this puts it more appropriate with the cost of the project. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Ordinance 42-2023.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $60,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund to purchase windows, doors, and related improvements for the Department of Public Works.
Mayor, I move ordinance 42-2023.
Council discussion? This is part of the capital budget that was presented earlier in the year. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Ordinance 43-2023.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $56,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund to purchase an electric zero-turn motor and accessories for the Department of Public Works.
Mayor, I move ordinance 43-2023.
Second.
Council discussion? Again, part of the capital budget, and should be noted that this is first major, I believe our first major electric zero-turn motor, so not only quieter, but it will be far better for the operators. They have to stand behind their vehicles or ride them with the exhaust fumes otherwise. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
And ordinance 44-2023.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $55,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund to purchase a Jeep and accessories for the Department of Public Works.
Mayor, I move ordinance 44-2023.
Second.
Council discussion? Another part of our capital budget. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Move on to Consent Agenda Resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent Agenda Resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Consent Resolutions 200-2023 through 220-2023.
Any discussion or any that need to be pulled? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Okay, there is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers, will the clerk please read the voucher totals?
From the current fund, $5,104,046.46. From the general capital fund, $14,712.96. From the electric operating fund, $543,621.24. From the electric capital fund, $167,455.96. From the water capital fund, $67,200 even, and from the trust, $38,393.06. The total is $5,981,651.94.
Mayor, I move approval of payment of the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
And there is no new business. Forte?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Aye.
Before 10 o'clock cutoff.